So, good evening. Welcome to the April 21st, 2022, April, November 21st, 2022 meeting of the East Bridgewater Planning Board. This evening, we have, at present time, four members present. We have Mr. Rob Ken, Mr. John Lawler, Mr. Ed O'Leary, myself, Kevin Riley. We expect Mr. Roy Gardner, Chairman, to arrive shortly, but in the interests of time, we'll, we'll get the meeting going and await his arrival. First order of business on the agenda is the approval of minutes for several meetings, those being June, July, August, September, as printed in the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes, or to individually, collectively, or to do any, take any other action that the Chair, the Board would please.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June 6th, 2022, July 18th, 2022, August 15th, 2022, and September 19th, 2022.
A motion made by Mr. Ken. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Lawler seconds the motion. Motion is to accept the minutes of June 6th, July 18th, August 15th, and September 19th without need of, of reading same into the record. Those would be the minutes as distributed by the office. Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Record will reflect that. It's unanimous vote of all members present. Second matter is a hearing with regard to the modification of a special permit for the property at 60 Franklin Street. What I'd like to do on that is just to open that hearing, and then just to continue it briefly to allow Mr. Gardner's arrival, since he's a little bit more familiar with sort of the goings-on. So, we will read into the record at this point, the notice of public hearing. Planning Board of the Town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 21st, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Town Office Building, 175 Central Street, large second-floor conference room. Purpose of the hearing will be to review a special permit modification. Plan submitted by Outback Engineering on behalf of client PMA Real Estate Management LLC doing business as Tri-Town Convenience. Applicant is requesting a modification to the special permit issued August 1st, 2022, specifically revising condition number eight, that the auto sales office space is not to be further divided or occupied by another tenant. Subject property located at 60 Franklin Street, consists of approximately 2.735 acres and 25 industrial drive, consisting of approximately 1.61 acres. Zoning district is industrial. Parcel is shown as Assessor's Map 95 Lot 224. Planning Board pursuant to East Bridgewater zoning bylaw section 5K2E Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, and Town of East Bridgewater bylaws Part 8, Construction Phase, Stormwater Management and Soil Erosion bylaw seeks public input relative to this proposed auto sales operation modification request. Plans are on file with the Building and Planning Department can be reviewed in the office during the hours of 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, Friday 8:30 AM to 12 noon. This notice was published in the Brockton Enterprise on November 7th and November 14th, 2022. Chair would now entertain a motion to just briefly continue this matter until 7:25 this evening?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ken, second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So, if you guys would just be patient for a couple of minutes, we'll get right back to you. Mr. Svetko, MJKBJ Realty, 47 Union Street. Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you? Good. So, last time you were here, we had some discussion. We asked you to provide a revised plan, which I believe that you have done, illustrating location of the vehicles, some plantings, and some other site improvements. I don't know if everybody's had an opportunity to look at that, but basically, we did receive a marked-up plan from last time with the three spaces, as was voted, plus the owner's space to the right of the building. Also, a rendering which showed the signage on the front of the newly renovated, shall I say?
Well, blue, yeah.
Blue building?
To be.
To be renovated, blue building. So, if you want to just, any comments, further comments that you might have?
No, basically, I kind of drew it the best I could, just to kind of give you an idea what it, you know, what it's going to be, what it's going to look like. Basically, the blue garage-looking thing right now is, is going to be vinyl-sided or painted with the new front redone, because the, the front of it's kind of rotting away. So, the whole front will be redone, and the whole place will be either vinyl-sided or painted. The grass area is either going to be gravelled or paved. I think right now we're considering just graveling it. We're going to put a fence along the right side of the property, separating from the residential area to the right, and just a bunch of plantings up and around to clear out some of the overgrown trees and stuff. Leave, leave some of them there, but plant some bushes around and just kind of clean up the area.
Questions, comments from any of the members? My only comment was, you know, I notice on the plan it does indicate that a lot of the front area is paved or crushed stone at this point.
Yeah.
We were hoping that a lot of the, or more of the grass area would be retained. I think, Rob, that was something that you had a concern about particularly.
Yeah.
I understand that, but it's kind of, otherwise, I'll be moving vehicles on top of them, grass and mud and everything else. So, that's why I kind of proposed either paving or crushed stone. I mean, the grass area that's in the front, which is the sidewalk right now, it's for that area, over by the hivern, you're going to have some grass area along the side, the, the right side of the property line. It's all, that's going to be mulched and bushes planted along the fence, and same thing to it along the back.
I mean, my only thought was...
I mean, I can do a little more grass area in the front. I just don't know how much more without running over the grass and making it muddy when it's...
Well, I mean, the motion that was approved last time was a motion to allow the three vehicles basically parked parallel to the, to the rear lot line.
Yeah.
Those, as displayed, I get it.
Yeah.
That's not quite parallel, but, you know, I understand that you probably want somewhat of the face of the vehicle to be facing out, you know?
Yeah, just a little, yeah.
So, I, I get that. So, I mean, I don't know if it's feasible to make something in the way of a, it appears that you've made a driveway access at the, at the far left.
Yes.
So, if you were to keep the, if you went from a diagonal from the left corner of the red outline building
Yeah.
to the right-hand edge of the access area with grass?
From the front of the building?
Something like that. If that were feasible, got the grass in this area here, and, you know, paved or stoned the back.
Right.
So that you would be running vehicles in and out just that one way, and not basically forward, you know, toward the street. So, you'd have more of a driveway effect that might require you to shuffle around vehicles a little bit more, but it would also...
Right. That's, that's kind of why it didn't have as much grass, because if we want to move the car closer to the building, all the cars would have to be shuffled in and out.
What say you, Mr. Ken?
Yeah, I mean, I'm all in favor of more, more grass. It's, it's going to look nicer.
I mean, I can...
Be more presentable for the area. I understand you need to move the cars. I don't anticipate it will be that often. You'll be shuffling the cars around, right? Just when it's sold, basically?
Hard to say. I mean, I, I can't say that...
Depends on the prices you offer.
Well, it depends on which kind they're looking at, you know?
There you go.
It's really, I mean, I can do, I, I mean, a little, I guess I could do a little more grass here in the front, you know, a couple of feet where the grass area is now.
I mean, how about if we split the difference and went,
Yeah.
you know, halfway from the, from the corner of the building halfway along with that island?
Yeah, diagonally a little bit.
So, where the, where the dimension is 8612, diagonal from the building, save everything? So, you're going to, you're going to pave or, or stone this, right?
Yeah.
All the way up here?
Yeah.
So, from this area here, over, and then something like that, halfway on this?
Yeah.
That will remain grass, and then you can...
Well, I mean, I kind of want to do a walkway or something to the...
Walkway to the front?
For the front, and not have to...
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
Walk on dirt, mud, whatever you want to call it.
Yep. That's certainly an improvement.
Maybe, maybe a walkway over towards the cars from the front door, you know, keep it grassy, but at the same time, kind of, you know what I'm saying? So, if I, if a customer wants to come out of the office, go look at a car, if I can have a walkway...
So, let's, let's leave it this way, Rob, maybe, that what we don't want to see is a finished project where there's no grass over there.
Right.
Okay? If you want to make some walkways, something like that, that's attractive, I don't think we have a problem with that. You know, as far as the rest of it's concerned, as I say, just don't pull all the grass out of there. Don't, that's, that will not be well-received. Okay? Everybody on board with that? Okay, so...
Do you want me to redraw that?
I mean, you can submit something to the office. You know, you don't have to, it's certainly not something I think that needs to come back here. Again, you know, we enjoy sharing...
Beautiful thing. I'd leave it...
Enjoy sharing our time with you.
Why mess with success, right?
Right.
It's a beautiful thing.
So, Chair would entertain a motion to accept the, the revised renderings and plan with the conditions, you know, just mentioned that all of the grass, or as much grass as possible, will remain absent the installation of any walkways that you might, you might put in there to, to facilitate people moving around the premises and such. So moved.
Yes.
Motion, Mr. O'Leary.
I'll second that, yeah.
Seconded by Mr. Ken. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Unanimous vote of those present. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
And likewise.
Thank you.
Is there... perfectly timed, Mr. Gardner. Well, what are you doing? Record will reflect that Chairman Roy Gardner has come into the room at 7:20 PM. Ready, willing, and able to assume his...
You'll continue.
I'll continue? Oh, my gosh. Okay. So, we had opened the hearing on 60 Franklin. We continued it just till 7:25 to await your arrival. In the meantime, we've got about five minutes left, I think. Just a couple of other things on the agenda, action items. The 2023 Planning Board meeting schedule, is that, is that in here?
That should be. If not, I have one right here.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
In there.
It's probably...
Familiar with, ah, there we go.
And then here's the legal holidays.
Just want to take a peek at that. So, basically, the meeting schedule, as it's been crafted, would have one meeting in January, that being on the 9th, one in February, that being on the 6th, the usual two in March, one in April, two in May, one in June, July, August, September, and then back to two a month. The singles during the January to June period are the result of legal holidays. So, I keep forgetting that. Discussion, that look agreeable to everybody for the time being. I mean, certainly, we can schedule additional meetings as, if they become necessary.
Good by me.
Yeah, it was fine.
So, Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the 2020 meeting schedule as presented to the Board.
I'll make a motion.
So, move by Mr. Lawler, second to the motion?
Second.
Mr. Ken, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? So voted. All right. Being 7:25 by the moderator's watch, as I used to say. PMA Real Estate Management, 60 Franklin Street, the modification to the special permit. Gentlemen, introduce yourselves to the Board, and any opening remarks that you would have.
Emil Cetea for PMA Real Estate Development, with me as well.
And I'm Donald Nagel, attorney for the applicant.
The simple revision we request of the Board is to remove the option of not allowing us to utilize the space in the back. We reconfigured, if we can pull up the plan that you guys have, we reconfigured it so that we can utilize one of the rooms that's already in the back as our office, and utilize the remaining space as a rentable area to our current tenant. The space that we're looking at is around 270 square feet, and we wouldn't have to reconfigure anything. We wouldn't have to move any doors, move any plumbing. We just, we'd use that space as our office for the retail space for the car dealership. You can zoom in. Yep, right there. So, right where the two blue spots are, there's a small square.
Right here?
Right there. That would be the proposed auto sales office. And that solves all of, most of the issues that we had.
Comments from the Board?
If I could, that's, excuse me, I got a really bad sore throat, but I have tested twice today for COVID, and
Worries.
I don't have any COVID, so... So, that, that's existing office space with a, with a access door from outside the building that you can get into?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a, there's a door from the outside. There's, as well, there's a bathroom there as well. So, it's always been like that, so...
Isn't that currently an office on this end?
On the other side, yeah. So, it's not an office, it's a...
Like a waiting area?
It's a wedding planner lady. She uses it as storage.
Oh, okay.
So, she's not using it as a active space. It's just to put her party supplies and tables and stuff. She puts flyers in the windows and stuff, so...
So, if we go back in time to the original and to the revised plans that were submitted?
Correct.
Why are we here tonight? We're here tonight because those plans indicated that the entire back area would be existing auto service area and new auto sales office. That's what it said. Nothing was represented to the contrary to the Board, never any mention of another tenant, okay, being back there. As the person who made the motion that was accepted and adopted by the Board, I would tell you it was certainly not my intention to restrict anybody else who was already there. It was to restrict future.
Correct.
Okay? Because, in my judgment, there's an awful lot going on in that site, you know, with the other building, repairs,
Yes.
Drive-through, the whole nine yards.
And that's why we felt confident to come back to the Board and tell you guys what the whole picture is, so that there's no back and forth.
So, as long as we understand that, I, I would assume, and I would hope, I won't assume anything, I would hope that we can agree that the, that one space for the wedding planner stays as a non-subdivided space unless, for purposes of the operation or expansion of the convenience store slash
Correct.
Honeydew Donuts, or, or what have you. Okay? Fair enough?
That sounds great.
Yes, okay. And the only other comment that I have is I believe that we had approved the four spaces being on the southerly side of the building, that the two up on the north piece were to come down to the area of where the, the door would be.
We can do that, yes.
So, that would be my only, my only comments.
Yes. It's an easy enough spray paint and change on the parking lot.
Okay. Further comments, Mr. Ken?
I remember the same thing. Those, those two spaces, we didn't like them over there, so we moved them over, requested that they move over here.
So, Chair then would entertain a motion that would amend condition eight from the prior decision, so that...
Yeah, that's, that's easy. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's just a spray paint.
Right, yeah.
So that we would have, apart from the auto sales and wedding planner, no additional tenants in the rear area, the 2,630 square foot area, unless, for purposes of the expansion of the existing uses, let's put it that way, that are in the building at this time. And then that the two spaces that are indicated to the north of the, to the building would come down to the, to the south side by the entrance to the auto sales area. Chair would entertain that motion, if somebody wants to make it.
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Gardner, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ken. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And obviously, that will get rid of our... And obviously, that will get rid of our...
Yes.
All those opposed? So voted. Unanimous vote of all those members present and voting. Thank you, gentlemen.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And likewise.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
The only other thing on action matters is the Willow Avenue matter, that I think there was some opposition to the prior, to the, to the gentleman who came in here to, to inquire about the rezoning, so that I think the, the answer there is that if he wants to proceed, he can do that through the process of getting some signatures and, you know, placing it before the Board of Selectmen. Otherwise, I don't think the Planning Board has a particular role to play, you know, with respect to that. Mr. Gardner, any other comment?
No, I think, I think I would agree with that. The, the past practice has always been that if, if all of the residents within a contiguous area of land are interested in seeing a rezoning done, then it was up to those residents to, to petition the Board to explain the, the positive reasons why they would like to get that zoning done. In this case, it's clear that at least one of the landowners involved in, in the land that would be rezoned has indicated a clear preference to, to leave the zoning as is. I think it would be up to the, to the resident who would, would like to see the rezoning to, to get a conventional petition done, which typically takes 10 signatures, then submit it to the Board of Selectmen for action, actually forwarding to the Planning Board, because the Planning Board still would have to make a recommendation.
Right.
A recommendation, the town meeting, in terms of, of what the Planning Board will recommend for that, so. So, I would agree, at this point, it's up to the resident to, if he decides he wants to, to attempt to proceed with that, to, to basically follow the initiative petition in town meeting process.
So, if Mr. Goncalves is either listening or comes into the office, that would be the, the advice that we could, or the suggestion that we could make to him. Anything else from the office, Mrs. Johnson? No?
I think so.
You're all set.
Just make sure somebody sends those minutes before we leave. So, does Franklin Street need to submit a new plan showing that they're moving the parking spaces?
I think that, I'm calling you Mrs. Johnson, Mrs. McKenzie, I apologize.
I didn't know it was a reference.
It's been, it's been a very long day. I, I apologize. I didn't think it was going to be necessary. I mean, I think he'll submit it, but I don't think as a condition of, of anything happening. I think was the, sort of, the consensus that we had.
Yeah, because that was different from the one we wrote on anyway.
Yeah, just so, just so we see something that's, if it's, he's going to show the walkways, and...
No, I'm sorry, 60 Franklin Street.
Oh, 60, I'm sorry, 60 Franklin, you're talking about not 47, not Union.
Should they give us a plan showing that they are moving the parking spaces?
I thought we had one.
I thought, I thought there was one also, which I kind of was surprised to see the...
I think he used his old...
The two back there. Roy, I suppose that, in the interests of, of clarity and having something, you know, in the record that accurately reflects what's, what's what, we should get that from them with just moving those two spaces.
Yeah, we, we should have, now that we know that the office is actually on the other side of the, because I think originally we thought the office space was going to be in the old office space from the electrical contractor.
Yeah, yeah.
Which you'd see those four, those four spaces showing articulously on the, on the south, 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 or southeast side of the building.
Okay, what is the plan?
Anything else that needs to come before the Board tonight? Hearing nothing. Mr. Lawler?
Our work is done here. I make a motion, that we head for the door.
Lawler has eloquently made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second to that motion?
Well, second and third.
Seconded by Mr. O'Leary. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody out in the cable TV land.
And to all a good night.
All a good night. Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you and good night.